Okay, welcome back from lunch. We're gonna start at seven point three point six.
Good afternoon, Mr. Reeve and Council.
Hey, good afternoon.
So I am presenting the Clayton Bellamy Foundation for the Arts Request for Funding and Letter of Support for, on behalf of Ms. Keembaugh. So I'll start with the background. At the December twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one regular meeting of council, a presentation was made to council on behalf of the Clayton Bellamy Foundation for the Arts, requesting one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in funding as well as a letter of support for the establishment and operation of a new performing arts theater in the town of Bonneville. Following the presentation, council requested administration to bring back this request for further consideration. So into the discussion on this, so Mr. Bellamy and his foundation believes that participation is an essential element in community development and has created a foundation to keep the arts alive and available in our community. The foundation was founded in two thousand and twenty-one as a nonprofit initiative to provide a venue for the Lakeland to showcase arts-based performances in a professional theater setting. Further project details presented during the delegation are included here as Appendix A. There is a date error, it said the eighth, it was actually the twenty-second, but they are attached here. From within that document, we pulled out the presentation that shows the estimated cost of this project at just over one million dollars and the funding sources that they had planned to seek are outlined there before you can see. The MD there is one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, as well as the town of Bonneville, city of Cold Lake. It should be noted that both of these, as far as we know, have not made any decisions. They've had similar requests yet, but we're not aware at this time if they've made a decision on funding from their municipalities yet. The provincial CFIP grant application also requires a confirmation from the applicant of fifty percent matching funds, which would be five hundred thousand dollars, and a letter of support or commitment from the local community stakeholders. Other arts that were supported and of note previously by council were, in two thousand and eighteen, council did receive a request for a community theater initiative from the Bonneville District Fine Arts Society. There was no update been received since that time on that. In two thousand and nineteen, council provided the Cold Lake Arts and Entertainment Society twenty-five thousand dollars for capital equipment purchases and facility upgrades for the Grand Parlour Theater in Cold Lake. This society has recently went defunct and they did donate all their capital assets to the Clayton Bellamy Foundation. Again, attached is the delegation presentation as well as an excerpt out of the Recreation Master Plan, which highlights, based on previous needs assessments and surveys that were done, where performing arts facilities ranked within everything, and it came in as number four behind number one being natural surface trails, boat launches, campgrounds, and then the performing arts facility was number four there as a need identified by the public. And there's the information from the master plan highlighting the process to which they recommended going through for the framework and to which it has been followed in this case pretty closely and would be in the final stage of costs and capital and then moving into the project execution. This does fall within the strategic plan of helping enhance livability of the community. And going into the costs and source of funding now, so the cost they're asking for is one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. There's two sources of funding that we can see council can ultimately pull from anywhere. However, we're recommending these two options. That the two thousand and twenty-two budget in council grants to individuals and non-government organizations, however, that only has a current balance of approximately one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars right now. The other source could be the foundation could apply for a two-hundred-thousand-dollar matching fund through the MD Community Action Grant Program. However, this would be considered a large project and that application date is for March fifteenth for the deadline, so it would have to come in two thousand and twenty-three for that. So administration is recommending then that council directs administration to advise the Clayton Bellamy Foundation for the Arts to apply for funding support through the Municipal Community Action Grant Program in two thousand and twenty-three for their performing theater project. It should be noted that in either case, through this grant, they would have to come back, as it's a major project, to council and request then, so a decision could be put to two thousand and twenty-three or it could be made today. It would, it's basically just deferring a decision and requiring them to come back. That said, by that time, there may be more information as to their request to the town of Bonneville or Cold Lake or their grant applications if they've received those funds at that time. The second part of that recommendation is that council approves a letter of support in principle for the Clayton Bellamy Foundation of the Arts Performing Arts Theater Project. And then the options are there. Option two is council can choose funding to come out of whichever source they deem would be best. And option three would be for administration to bring back further information on this.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
This question, the Community Action Grant Program, Municipal Community Action Grant Program, how much is generally in that? You said there's not enough left in two thousand and twenty-two. How much would there be in two thousand and twenty-three?
Through the Reeve, to Council Swiger's question, so currently, there's a one hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred remaining roughly, however, there's a little over thirty thousand pending in applications that are currently under review, which would leave around the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars remaining in that fund. And should also be noted that once that fund is gone, then anybody else applying for any grants wouldn't be able to receive them because the funds would be allocated for two thousand and twenty-two unless council decide to top that up.
Council Fidav?
So in regards to the numbers that they're asking for, did they give you any indication how to come up with these numbers to see town of Bonneville a hundred thousand and we're in and ask for one hundred and seventy-eight? Since this place is gonna be in the town of Bonneville, most of the economic spinoff, people coming into town, going in to see a show, will stop in at a coffee shop, a gas station, a bar after, and I'm surprised that our commitment where we get no economic development spinoff is more than the towns is.
Through the Reeve to the question, I, Ms. Keembaugh was predominantly looking into this, however, when I did discuss with her prior, as far as I know, there she wasn't able to get that breakdown after request, requesting for it.
Okay, thanks, it just seems little. Yeah, definitely, right? I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm definitely okay with, you know, matching the town at a hundred to just the one seventy-eight is just, yeah. They're both one seventy-eight, let's do it, but.
Yeah.
Just a quick.
Thank you. Just a point, there's the other, the Cold Lake Arts Society, or was it when defunct, received twenty-five thousand from us, sorry?
Uh, yes.
And they give that to the Clayton, so they've already, they've already received twenty-five thousand from us indirectly then?
In two thousand and nineteen.
And that was equipment?
Yeah.
I think it was lights and stuff, wasn't it?
Yeah, those were lights and mics and things like that, that's pretty important stuff to have for a theater.
Yeah, can I just add to that though, Council Cricket was, they didn't receive it, it was actually the Grand Parlour at the time that received it, different organization, but they trans, when they shut down, they transferred the money, or the equipment, I guess, to that group.
Yeah, which is why I said indirectly received it from us.
Okay, I was looking for something here.
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm fine with them applying for the Community Action Grant, I mean, that's kind of what that's there for, right? So there's a whole approval process that follows that as well, right? So.
Just to comment that through that, it will be another presentation to council at that time, but again, it'll possibly have more information too, so.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to advise the foundation to apply for the grant. Yeah. They can determine a number and they can justify it, I guess, the next time they.
Yeah, quick question, when is the, sorry, the deadline for the CFIP grant? Are we talking this year or are we talking next year? If we kick it down the road, is that gonna impede them from applying for a CFIP grant?
To the, through the Reeve, to the best of my understanding of this, if we provided a letter in principle for support, I believe that would allow them to still apply for that. However, I don't know about what requirements, if, that you have the funding in place to apply for those grants, I'm not familiar with those requirements or not.
Yeah, I think usually, usually there is.
Well, no, just based on the golf course, remember, was the golf courses applied one year and then they had to come back to us after they got the grant to ask for the funding?
No, they asked for it, they had the funding, they could have gotten it different ways, so you still have to indicate on your, on your application form where you, like, where the funding is coming from. So if you have nothing, then they say self-funded or whatever else that comes out of their reserves.
You're right, we hadn't, we hadn't actually funded it, they asked for it, we wrote a letter of support, but we hadn't actually had any, we hadn't budgeted for it, and then they came back later and asked for it.
Right, yeah. Yes, go ahead.
Just maybe to help clarify, I was just told that it, they would have to prove that they can match those funds within that letter.
Yeah, go ahead, Steph.
To Mr. Reeve and the council, CFIP grants are typically a percentage matching grant, and in your application, you have to demonstrate having the matching funds, be that through your own financial statements or letters of support from other organizations committing a certain amount of funding towards the project.
Thank you.
So I mean, even, even with their list, they, even if we did do one hundred and seventy-eight, they still don't have five hundred thousand dollars there to match, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, there must be more too, unless they're applying for less, I don't know.
Okay, we're gonna go with, Council Scarsen makes a motion that council directs administration to advise Clayton Bellamy Foundation for the Arts to apply for funding support through the Municipal Community Action Grant Program in the two thousand and twenty-three for their performing arts theater project. Any discussion? Yes, did I miss out something?
No, just the second part of that.
In a letter of support?
The letter of support.
Isn't it two different motions or?
Well, it's option one.
You can combine the two motions if you so please.
Okay, and that council approves a letter of support in principle for Clayton Bellamy Foundation of the Arts Performing Arts Theater Project? Any discussion, yes, Council Cricket?
Question, what does that letter of support really mean?
Al?
Through the Reeve, to Council Cricket and to the rest of council, typically, letters of support would indicate that we would be supporting the project financially and that the, I just worry when we do letters of support without a funding attached to it, that we, somebody could say to us, well, you supported us, we applied for a grant.
Yeah, that's why I thought we should have two different motions.
Yeah, I'm okay with the first part, but if it's all one motion, I have to, I'll be voting opposed to it because I don't think we should be writing that letter of support then.
Can I just add to that, Mr. Reeve? But the letter of support would, if it has to say anything, it would say one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, that's what they're applying for.
Well, I missed, I mean, you look at all the other letters of support, including the town, there's no, if they don't mention anything about the financial, they just say they support the application, so I don't understand why it has to be money attached to it, right? No one's saying it does except for us, that the town was right in here, and so we just support the project, we're looking forward to see what comes, right?
You're right. So, Mr. Reeve? Council Fidav and Council Cricket?
I think it's, I think it's easy to do that, if they have five hundred thousand sitting in their bank account, then, you know, they're all looking for matching, they can say, well, we'll get, we'll try to get the money later, but if they don't have the money to put up for the matching grant, then I think it's just for them to write it, they're just gonna get kicked back saying, well, why are you guys applying for these, for this grant when you can't match it? So I think with a letter of support with a matching, it's just easier for them, unless they have five hundred grand, I don't know.
Council Cravie?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, I agree with Council Fidav, which is a shock, but are we going to be supporting them for a hundred thousand or a hundred and seventy-eight thousand? You know?
Yeah.
If Bonneville is supporting a hundred thousand, why should we be matching one seventy-eight? Is my question.
Yes. Yes, Deputy Reeve Swiger?
Yeah, my, I guess my comments are that it's kind of, it's not a large price to pay though for a fine arts theater, if they're actually gonna build a fine arts theater and come up with this for a million, million bucks and we're gonna kick in one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, I don't think it's a huge ask. I mean, you know, Council Fidav's saying maybe it's the town of Bonneville's building that they should kick in, or it's in their town, they should kick in more, but one hundred and seventy-eight thousand's not a ton of money, we could build it in the MD, but it's gonna cost us a ton of money.
Yeah, maybe you can talk to the town of Bonneville and say, hey, well, you guys do one seventy-eight and we'll do a hundred, if it's not a lot, right? I mean, like, the economic spinoff is gonna be for the town.
I still think it attracts, you know, if you got a nice fine arts theater here, it does attract folks.
Exactly what you said, it does attract folks.
It does, but to the MD also.
Where are they gonna sleep?
Well.
I think, Mr. Reeve, I, just a couple of options, the letter of support could certainly be written with a pending clause, you know, pending successful grant applications, et cetera, et cetera, or the other thing I would offer to council, if there is consensus upon council that this is the direction the council will go in, why make Clayton Bellamy wait till March of next year, why make them go through, jump through the hoops? If there's consensus on council, have the debate, we can, there's a hundred and fifty-ish thousand in that Community Action Grant, Grant right now, plus there's another hundred and twenty-eight left available out of the, out of the grant program for NGOs, so we have up to the one hundred and seventy-eight between those two different programs. So if council wants, it's just to, you know, if council thinks they would approve this in the spring anyway, why, why not just do the letter of support and pick the number, whether it's a hundred and seventy-eight or a hundred thousand, and why not just approve it sooner than later?
That's a good point.
I am, I agree too, that it's, I'm a little curious on where the one seventy-eight actually came from, like, that seems like a kind of a odd number, that must have been calculated from somewhere, right? It's not one fifty or one seventy-five, it's one seventy-eight, so I don't remember him in the presentation exactly breaking that down for us, so.
Yeah, through the Reeve, just a comment, I recall in the presentation, they figured it covered more, we're larger, we had more population, but Cold Lake was further away, so they, they wouldn't be funding more, but Bonneville would, but they still weren't able to really break down that when asked, because I recall that during the presentation too, so.
Yeah, Council Fidav?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion right now for a hundred thousand dollars.
We have a, we have a motion on the table though right now.
Oh, do we?
Yeah.
We can turn it down.
No, it's okay, I'm just.
Okay, I read it out, this motion.
Well, and I'm just curious too, is it time sensitive, like, when, I know they apply for CFIPs, I think, in the spring and in the fall, right? Twice a year, is that right?
I'd love to kind of review this, if you have lines or if it's just light.
I think it's typically in the, before June and December or whatever, I think it's twice a year, but, yeah, nice to know some of those questions, I think, too, right before even committed any money at all, I would say, but I don't think it's, I mean, we can do it quickly on our end, right? So.
Okay, any, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Hogan.
If that's a, if that's a question that I hear from several councils now, maybe a suggestion would be to table this motion, direct administration to come back to the next council meeting with that answer. We can very easily pick up the phone this week, call Clayton Bellamy Foundation and say, how did you come up with a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, and come back, just table this to the April twenty-seventh council meeting, and we can have an answer for you, and then council can revisit this with the answer to that question.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion to table.
Okay, thank you.
April twenty-seventh meeting, yeah.
You have to vote on it? I don't think you need discussion, just all in favor? Carrie, thank you, gentlemen, seven three point seven.
So this is the Planning Community Services Department two thousand and twenty-two Quarterly Report. Administration is presenting council with a quarterly summary report for the months of January, February, and March two thousand and twenty-two from the Planning and Community Services Department. This report is to keep council aware of projects and activities within the department. Attached are the reports, and we're gonna have our manager of planning and development come first and speak to the planning side, and then we'll have our manager of Parks and Recreation follow.
Thank you, Bowen. All right, so attached as Appendix A is the first quarterly report of two thousand and twenty-two, covering the months of January, February, and March for the Planning and Development Department. We did have twenty building permits that were issued in the first quarter for a year-to-date total of just under two point four million. Just to show you, last year, we had eighteen permits at one point five million, so we are a little bit ahead of where we were sitting last year. We've had two housing starts so far in two thousand and twenty-two, both are single-family dwellings. We've had fifty-eight safety codes permits, majority for the MD of Bonneville, we did issue one for the Summer Village of Bonneville Beach. Two new subdivision applications that were both received in February of this year. Sixteen new non-compliances, and we have resolved seven. Project updates, currently, we're working on two area structure plans for the hamlet of Cherry Grove and also the hamlet of Ardmore. The SPs are currently in the creation and development phase, with draft documents being produced and on track for public introduction and engagement this spring. As well, we're conducting a review and update of the municipal development plan. This plan is being reviewed to ensure consistency with other planning documents and to confirm compatibility with existing legislation. We are waiting for the approved two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-seven strategic plan to be adopted in order to move forward with the creation of this draft document for administration to review.
Thank you. Just looking for a motion, I guess? That's correct. Okay, thank you, Council Cravie. Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry, we got part two.
All right.
Yeah.
Sorry, my fault, hundred percent.
Good afternoon, Mr. Reeve and Council?
Good afternoon.
I have the pleasure of answering any questions on the quarterly report for our capital projects, for Parks and Rec, and Kinesu Bowen, our director here for Parks and Rec, is gonna be answering the Kinesu project, so if there's any questions to be asked there surrounding our projects, right now, a lot of the projects that you see, like our boat launch, Crane Lake East, a lot of these are still caught up in our environmental approvals through the province, so not a whole lot of information to give back to yet on those. We still continue to, you know, follow up on those and find out exactly what kind of information we can get, but there really isn't a whole lot of information yet back on that, so.
Yes, Council Scarsen.
So I believe you have three boat launch pads set up to roll out this year, is, so those on schedule for July, like, as, like, I think it's after the fish spawning or whatever? Is that still on track then?
Yeah, through the Reeve, to council, yeah, that's correct, they are, we have to wait till after June thirtieth to start those projects, and those approvals are now in place, and we have our material, we have, we're ready to go when, when we get past that, that's their spawning stage.
Thank you. Deputy Reeve Swiger, please.
Yeah, I guess it's more of a question about the Crane Lake, moving the Vezo Dock to Crane Lakes, I think that got canceled or something because of lack of funding, but I'm not sure what's going on at Crane Lake with the west side with that Vezo Beach.
It was, it was removed from the budget, the budget deliberation in the fall.
And so what, what, can you, maybe give me a bit more input on why it was removed or?
I would suggest anything that was removed from the budget would be a discussion you'd have to have with counselors and council, was a council decision to not put it in the budget or remove it from the budget?
Because I didn't think it was a budget issue, I thought we had a dock at Vezo that we were moving to Crane Lake, so maybe give me clarity on what the project actually involved and why it was a big budget item?
Through the Reeve, to Council Swiger, the, on the administrative side, the requirements for, to move that boat launch, there has to be environmental work done because we have to then put pilings and stuff into the lake bed to anchor the boat launch down, and so most of the work and funding would be required for that, that's, that's where the budget monies were, were for, as well as contingent on still this boat launch and, and dock being replaced and moved, and after that point, that was an option that was being considered, however, we're still waiting for approvals on the Vezo Beach at this point.
So are we, are we actually asking for approvals though for to do that ever, or we just, it'll never happen at Crane Lake? I'm not, I'm not sure what's?
So through the Reeve, because it was removed from the budget, we didn't proceed with anything at that time because it wasn't approved, so we wouldn't then do the work for something that wasn't approved or, so that's where it stands.
Is that something that, I guess I'll ask council, was, does anybody recall how much that was? I think I missed, must have missed that meeting, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, through the, through the Reeve, council, Council Swiger, or Deputy Reeve Swiger, I believe it was a hundred and fifty thousand. I'd have to go back at the records, but I believe a hundred and fifty thousand is what I think that was.
And that was, that was removed because we had to try to balance the budget or whatever, we didn't have the funding, I guess, was that?
It was all presented to council, and I don't remember after, after the three or four days of deliberation, but it didn't, it did make it through, through budget deliberation with council, so.
I don't, I don't remember either, and I think you were, you had operation at that time when we were probably discussing. And so do, you know, can we, Mr. CEO, do we bring that back, or do we do it next year? I'm not sure.
If the, if, if, if an individual counselor, for yourself, for example, would like to see that back in, in the budget, we can certainly add that to the two thousand and twenty-three budget for budget deliberation again for this year, absolutely.
Well, I'd definitely like to see it brought back into, have discussion, I know we're gonna, well, we're supposed to be meeting with the Crane Lake folks sometime this spring to sort of discuss what we're doing out there, and it'd be nice to be able to tell them that we are, because we've kind of been trying to plan for a dock out there for several years, so it'd be nice to get them some kind of action.
Was it for, maybe because we thought it was not gonna happen to get that dock out of Vezu before fall or something to that effect? I don't recall exactly either, but, because that was the plan, I think, right, to move the dock from Vezu to Crane, but, so you're saying it would be a hundred and fifty thousand to do that though?
Yeah, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I believe we budgeted. Yeah, I, I don't have the numbers in, in front of me, but I believe we budgeted, you know, it was a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand and that would cover the environmental work and the engineering and stuff to do that, um, there.
Counselor Fede.
Yeah, I would like to see some sort of consultation done on that. Uh, I know I, I guess some feedback that, uh, some people are concerned about the lake being too busy. If we put a, a launch out there as busy enough as it is, so their concerns are that there's gonna be a public one. You know, is it gonna get crazy busy as, you know, it's weekends, they're nuts out there, so that's some of their concerns. So I don't think we did a proper consultation out there. Uh, I think we talked to the society, but not, I don't think every, anybody, uh, not everybody belongs to the society, so. I'm just saying, if we do a proper consultation, then we can say, yes, we, we did do that, yes, it's, it's gone that way and we're okay with it.
Yeah, I, I guess we do have to, we will have to bring it up and if you want me to make a motion to bring it back or whatever, there, um, I know there was consultation through our environmental group, like over the last probably six years that they were out there doing kind of riparian cleanup and that sort of thing. And one of the issues was, uh, with the dock that was there, there's a lot of folks that come out there to use that dock, but they're all docking their boats, cause the dock's not big enough for launching. It's, you can, you can put your boat in the water, but you can't really tie it up there, so they're using the beach.
Yeah, for guests.
And all these boats run up on the beach, right? So, uh, I think that the thought of a Vezzo dock would allow a lot more boats out there. Uh, or at least the boats that are there. I'm not saying you wanna put a bunch more boats there, cause that's, that's an issue, but would allow those boats to get off the beach, I think, and then out onto the dock. I think that was the thought or the concept.
Yeah.
Anyway, yeah, I'll ask Mr. CEO.
We, we certainly bring it back at, uh, at, uh, budget for, uh, for council to deliberate, absolutely. What I will say is having spent quite a bit of time in the last year, uh, it, uh, in and around the Crane Lake with, uh, dealing with different issues out there, there is, uh, um, um, there is a wide range of opinions on what should happen at Crane Lake amongst the residents of Crane Lake. So that, it, it will be an interesting conversation.
Well, it, for sure, well, it's just that we had told folks that we're moving that dock, so.
Why did you guys tell them that you're moving it?
Well, because we, that was the plan, like the MD had said, we're moving, it was a public announcement, we're moving Vezzo Beach Dock to Crane Lake. And so that been.
That was years ago yet even.
Well, yeah, so I've been getting, you know, responses, feedback saying, what, you know, what are we doing? So I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I don't remember the, the public announcement.
Well, they don't know it.
But there's definitely a public announcement versus.
Well, it would generally be here, like in this room, right? So I guess that's.
Was there a motion then, I guess?
Well, I don't know.
Well, anyway, we'll.
It doesn't matter, we're just.
We're gonna look it up.
Okay, appreciate that.
Look more into it, thank you.
The other thing, Mr. Reeve, the other thing I just wanted to ask is about the parks and I'm not sure where, where this fits into here, but I've, like in past years, we'd, we'd get a report once a year to show how much revenue that we're getting from the parks and how much usage from the parks and, and historically, I would think it was, uh, probably Crane Lake and Coal Lake, the MD Park in Coal Lake. They were kind of making all the revenue and really subsidizing the other parks, so, um, it'd be nice if we kind of got that information budget-wise is how much the parks are bringing in and how much campgrounds are making and, and I kind of think of, uh, Muriel Lake and, cause it's a really nice area out there, the Parks Department does a lot of work to maintain the trails and maintain all the stalls on it. I just don't know if I see the usage out there. So it'd be kind of nice to look at those numbers too.
Uh, through the, the reef, um, to that, uh, we're planning on bringing, uh, the, uh, kind of a season end. I have a, a couple of high points just, um, from the ski season, but maybe doing it twice a year. So after the ski season, then do a report on, uh, how the ski season went, all that, and then, after the, the summer season, then, then kind of give a report where we're camping and, and stuff landed there. To, to kind of show where, where we are in, in things like that, so. That is, we're planning on bringing one in, I guess, the second quarter here for June, cause they're still working out the numbers from, from winter. I do have some rough stuff I'll, I'll share her, um, as well, but, uh, no, that definitely is on the radar. Uh, you mentioned it last, last, uh, time too.
Counselor Fede.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Uh, it's an important thing. So I think about a year and a half ago, we had a, I think you guys brought out a study for that. And then we did increase the rates, cause we were kind of behind the, uh, the game. And I'd like to see what those new rates are, are doing and see if they're at all deterring people from coming and are we on the right track? So, yeah, thanks.
All right, any other discussion? Yeah, Counselor.
Just a couple of questions. The Angling Lake Boat Launch, do you, are you, is that gonna happen this year or is? People are asking me about that out there, so.
I'll let Rodney, but as far as I know, that, that's the same with a lot of these with the approvals.
Okay.
Um, and I know, um, there was a meeting with the minister too and we sent letters, but.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it hasn't, uh, um, really pushed anything, um, that we've seen to date, uh, ahead, um, and, and that's kind of where that one's.
And then, and then with.
Mr., sorry, go ahead.
And then with Muriel Lake Campground, are, are we, people out to ride horseback on the trails out there?
So, uh, through the reef, uh, not, not currently. Um, we're still waiting approval on that, um, business plan. And then once that's, um, approved, then, then, um, they, they will be, until then, um, it's, uh, not permitted, uh, through the, the agreement. Thank you.
Counselor Fede.
So I know that one there was also stuck in consultation, so did, did that part of it make it through? And we're just waiting for just a business plan now?
Uh, yes, uh, through the, uh, reef, uh, so that, um, originally had to go through F and C and then, uh, they found out, um, it didn't. And now it's just approval of the, the business plan on that, that end and we're still waiting. Not, you haven't heard anything either?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's something, like there's some excitement about, about that out there.
Yeah, cause it involves seasonal camping. There's a whole bunch of stuff in that and still, we're still waiting, um, unfortunately, so.
And Mr. Reeve, I would, uh, one thing I would add that, uh, on Bowen, uh, I didn't mention today is, of course, everybody's aware that a little over, about a week and a half ago, uh, we started our campground reservations. And, uh, uh, there was a bit of a system crash with our contractor who was handling it. Uh, we received quite a bit of encouragement through social media and, um, and, uh, that, uh, we, we very quickly, um, the staff moved very quickly to find a different provider for that service. And I, and I am pleased to report that, uh, uh, within, uh, within probably three days of bringing on the new provider, that, uh, everything is running, um, exceedingly smoothly with the new campground reservation system.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you staff for doing that. The pretty tough position we're put in there for a few days.
Yeah, uh, through the reef, I was, uh, yeah, I was gonna touch on, on a couple of those, um, points there just to acknowledge that, yeah, there was a, a bit of a catastrophic, um, event with that. And, uh, yeah, a lot of excited people, a lot of wanting to go camping and.
Yeah.
Um, so which is good. Um, so we, we worked really hard to, uh, fix that, find another provider and do the switch over. They had their team come in over the weekend, input all their data, got it up and running. Uh, then it was just on our side, um, throughout the week to get our caretakers and staff trained, uh, the financial side of it in order. And so then we were able to launch on Thursday and Friday. And, uh, over that, uh, launch, um, from the, the Thursday through to Monday morning, uh, there was about nine-hundred-and-sixty bookings, uh, made, uh, which equate to over two-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars in, um, camping reservation revenue. Uh, so that's, uh, um, I, I don't have much more data on that, but, uh, that kind of, there's a lot of really positive comments and uptake. Uh, people are really happy with the new system. And our communications department was, uh, relieved, cause the comments were.
We might have snow on the lakes or ice on the lakes for another three, three extra weeks this year, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. That was for all campsites except Wolf Lake, which is not online. Why is Wolf Lake not on, online?
Uh, so the, the reason for, um, Wolf Lake is it's, uh, it doesn't have any cell service or anything out there. So they can't, um, receive any, any, uh, bookings online, so it has to be manual. However, we're gonna look at next year, maybe doing everything more centralized and, and then they can be incorporated to the online booking as well. There, so, but, uh, that's, uh, kind of the, the reservation story, um.
Yeah, you should really try to market that, Wolf Lake, no cell service. Uh, you know, I think that somebody will say, oh, I, I, I wanna be there. Definitely some marketing too.
Yes.
You're gonna agree with Ben again?
But Mr. Reeve, uh, as I was gonna, there is cell service there because the former caretaker there, the Melnicks, we were able to get him on their cellphone while they were there. So there is cell service there.
It depends what day it is, yeah. It's very spotty.
Yep.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
You have to be in a certain area, I think.
Yeah, through the reef, too. We, we did install a tower to, to try and help, um, with that last year. It helped a little bit, but, uh, I'm, I believe it's still quite, quite patchy. Yeah, so, um, so, yeah. Sorry, I, I had a, if, if, uh, I.
You go right ahead. No problem.
So, so just, uh, as I mentioned, I'll bring some more information, um, in the second quarter that's more, uh, refined. But, uh, just, just to highlight for the ski season at Kinisou, we had, uh, over eight-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars in sales. And that's after the, uh, we gave about twenty-eight thousand or so, uh, was refunded. So we were just short of our twenty-twenty numbers, uh, which were around eight-hundred-and-seventy-thousand. So, uh, I, I'd say quite, quite well, um, that, that we did. We did around twenty-two thousand lift passes, uh, and when you incorporate the school kids, uh, that increased to about twenty-seven thousand visits, um, that we had over that, uh, season. Cafe sales were, uh, roughly a hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars over what they were in twenty-twenty-one, uh, just simply because of the, the no COVID restrictions anymore and stuff, so, uh, that helped, uh, massively. There. And on, uh, the ski, uh, theme with the, the green chair, um, so now, uh, the green chair is completely, uh, dismantled, gone. Uh, the scrappers came in, took away a lot of the, uh, the towers, the, the metal, um, there. And our transportation department's gonna be moving in when, in the next, uh, couple of weeks or so and starting to remove the old pilings. Following that, um, we'll also be, uh, realigning some of the, uh, electrical lines and stuff that, that are interfering with some of the piling placement. And then, uh, we have a contractor that's gonna start coming in and driving, uh, the new pilings in, uh, for the new towers, um, to go. So they'll be, it's, it's a, could be a busy place out there. Um, on the adventure park, uh, there, uh, so our, uh, McElaney will be doing a final walkthrough on the twentieth, uh, next week. And then Crystal Term, the, uh, people who design and, and build the, the adventure park, they're coming out to train our staff and, uh, our operations, how to, to do the mechanical sides as well as how to, the guides and stuff for that, um, the beginning of May. And then, uh, there is the, the, uh, media and dignitary, uh, grand opening, uh, which, uh, you've all, um, received an invite to, uh, for May nineteenth. Uh, following that will be the grand opening to the public on May twentieth. Uh, we're gonna have some more details on the adventure park specifics and stuff to, to come, uh, to council shortly, but, uh, those are just kind of the, the highlights now, so. Where?
Thanks. Looking for a motion of, for information? You did already?
Only for half of it.
You're making this one too? Okay, thank you, uh, Counselor Kavyak. That council accepts finding then Community Service Department two thousand twenty-two first quarterly report as information. Any discussions? Seeing none of those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Yes?
Just, uh, those are pretty incredible numbers to come up with considering the outdoor, indoor, whatever tents weren't allowed to use, only a two-sided tent, tent with, uh.
No, no.
Yeah, always that's.
No roof or ceiling.
Yeah, you guys, you guys did an amazing job for, for what we, you know, for what we guys were given, so, thanks.
Yeah, I have to agree with, uh, Ms. Counselor Fede. It was quite a, we all, we all agree that's, uh, it's quite a overtaking that you guys undertaking.
Yeah.
And over. Good job. I'm gonna shut up now. All right. Onto seven five, no, seven-three-eight Moose Lake Trails, is that correct? Onto your blue sheets, I think.
So, uh, this, this was an emergent, uh, item as we just got, uh, tenders in last week. Uh, so following direction from council during the March ninth, twenty-twenty-two regular meeting at council, administration then proceeded, uh, with the tendering of the twenty-twenty-two Moose Lake Trail Project. The tender for the project closed, uh, April fifth last week. Uh, and the project, uh, contracted engineering and design firm then reviewed the submissions and provided a recommendation to award the lowest qualified bid. Within the tender package, there were three provisional schedules or optional sections of trail. So each of these, uh, provisional schedules, uh, as needed, could be removed from the project to remain in budget, allowing the remainder of the trail to be completed. The three provisional schedules were three-point-oh, four-point-oh, and five-point-oh. Uh, they are shown on a, a kind of map on the, uh, in your attachment there. And, uh, the respective total bid amounts, uh, for each are shown here, uh, with, uh, schedule three-point-oh was around a hundred-and-forty-thousand. Schedule four-point-oh, uh, was forty-nine-thousand, uh, eight-hundred-and-sixty-one. And schedule five-point-oh, uh, was, uh, a little bit over a hundred-and-fifteen-thousand. So with the, uh, administration is, is proposing that the schedule five-point-oh, um, provisional or optional piece be excluded from this trail, uh, project. And should any funds remain near the end of, uh, the, uh, completing this project, the removed, uh, provisional schedule could be included and completed as budget and time allows. So the, the, kind of the, the budget breakdown here showing what that bid was. Uh, so the lowest qualified bid, not including GST, was one-point-seven, uh, or one-million-seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, six-hundred-and-sixty-seven cent, or ninety cents. And the contracted engineering design firm, their fees are three-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty, which combined, uh, puts us over budget, uh, by seventy-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and ninety cents. So, uh, because of this, uh, overage, uh, that's why, uh, the recommendation to remove the schedule five, um, is being presented here. Or, uh, another option is that additional funds, uh, of the seventy-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventeen-ninety, could be, uh, added to the project to allow for all the options to be completed. So again, uh, the recommended action is that council directs administration to remove schedule five-point-oh provisional from the twenty-twenty-two Moose Lake Trail Project as presented. And furthermore, the council directs administration to reinstate the removed schedule five-point-oh into the project scope, should there be sufficient funds and time remaining near the completion of the project. So there's, uh, five options, uh, the first one being, uh, removing schedule five-point-oh. Uh, the second option, uh, council can choose, uh, another schedule three or four or five or all of them as they wish. Schedule three is, uh, simply adding, uh, the additional funds to, to proceed, uh, with all, um, the options. Option four is to, uh, postpone until the interminable trail master plan is completed and, uh, option five would be, um, the option to cancel, uh, the tender outright, um, uh, because of budget constraints.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Skarson?
Yeah, thanks for the options and it's, it's good to know where the pricing is, so I'm gonna make a motion, but I'm going to beforehand, just remind council that we did vote on this and, uh, I would ask that we respect the integrity of that vote to continue on with this project. You know, it's right around where we thought it was gonna be. Uh, I'm actually gonna make a little bit of a concession though and, um, go for option number two. removing all three of the scheduled, which would leave a little bit of money in there, about three hundred thousand in the trail fund for future projects as well, right? So I know there's some others that want to get some stuff built, and I think that's an easy one, especially with the, you know, we're lowering speed limits in some of those subdivisions anyways, so it's not as much as a need. If we keep it on the main roads, I think that's plenty good, right? So I'll make that motion to go with option number two, removing all three of the scheduled.
Yes.
I love that because then it would just leave a better, more money for Vezro Beach Dock to be moved to Crane, right?
Well, I don't know if that falls in the trail budget or not.
Things walking trails, yeah. Not walking the plank, but walking trails.
Or Mr. Reeve for the purchase of the fire trucks apparatus.
It is for walking trails and walking trails alone. That's what's in the budget, so.
You guys are really confusing me right now. Council Crick?
Well, yeah, if we do that, then it'll use money for the trail to come from Emerald Estates into Bonneville, which is important as a safety issue.
Agreed.
Okay, your motion is?
Yeah, it's option number two with removing all three of the schedules that are mentioned, yep.
Okay, Council Scarsen makes a motion that council directs administration to remove schedules three, four, and five provisions, provisionals from the two thousand twenty-two Moose Lake Trail project. And furthermore, that council directs administration to reinstate the remove of schedule three, four, and five into the project should be, should there be sufficient funds and time remaining near the completion of the project?
It's close, so the last half can come out. Just delete them entirely.
And then I do have a question for Council Scarsen. So those schedules, if you look the map, it looks like they might be roadways or ton of paths anyway that would allow people to get to those trails.
But, yeah, I think, like I said, mixed with the reduction in the subdivisions, speed limits, that helps, right? So it's, you're kind of cutting into subdivisions. Now, as it is, it's just on the main arteries, right, that are eighty kilometers an hour roads or whatever, right? So not in the forties anymore.
Okay, that's good there, Dars. Council Scarsen, I mean.
Dars works too.
All right, any discussion on this? Just a lot of comments, seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve and council.
Hey, thank you, good job. Seven point four?
Mr. Reeve?
Yes?
Can we, as a result of those extra funds, get them put towards the trail by Emerald Estates? Can we make a motion for that now?
I think we just follow the list, and that was the Cherry Grove stuff. Has been waiting for years, was taken off the list. And that's kind of where I think I sit.
Yep, Mr. Cao.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. So the three hundred thousand, because that money was coming from the trail reserve, that that three hundred thousand will go right back into the trail reserve. So it would just then be up to a decision of council to, there was a, I believe there was, and Mr. Clauvin can certainly speak to it, a pecking order of what was next on the list. However, that's a council decision, and if council decided they wanted to do Emerald Estates or Cherry Grove or some other place in the MD that would be up. But the money itself will go back into the walking trail reserve until such time as council determines another project.
Yeah, and could we maybe, well, I guess you have a motion on.
I was asking if I could make it, but we'll, we'll leave it in the reserve for now and may bring it back to council.
I think if we.
Properly.
Yeah, if we had a discussion first, it's kind of right on the heat of the moment here.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes?
Can I just ask, though, maybe just for a quick update on the trail plan, though, for next year? Because we have to do this almost a year ahead of time, right? And we have to tender out the trails that we want to be building next year. So are they done yet? Like, have we picked what we're doing?
Through the reef, to the Deputy Reeve Swagert. So part of the interminable trail master plan is going to incorporate everything. And then after that is complete, that'll come back to council as a presentation. And then from there, that'll have recommendations of how best to proceed for next. Currently, there'll be, the Cherry Grove and Fort Kent will be, for the most part, shovel-ready. However, there is the transportation routes that were a consideration for those. That's why they were also deferred at that time. But it'll come back at that time for discussion.
And that's, that would be, at that time would be this, this fall or something, or?
Yes, through the reef. So that, they're planning to have that complete in the early fall there.
Okay, thanks. And I'll just ask again for Council Crick, was the Emerald Estates one on that list?
It, through the reef, with discussions with the consultant, we can advise that that's been one that has considerations that need to be taken into account when developing the whole plan, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you. I guess we're on to seven point four, point one?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Our general manager of corporate services, Senator Regret, she's ill today. So I'll be presenting the next couple of ones for the general manager. So this one in particular is bylaw number seventeen ninety-seven, the amending rate master, or the master rates bylaw. Bylaw number seventeen ninety-seven is an amendment to the master rates bylaw seventeen eighty-six to include council direction to have no charge for used culverts to MD residents and to include the fees charged in the commemorative bench and picnic table program. The MGA requires council to pass bylaws regarding services provided by the MD, which includes the fees charged for providing those services. On December twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, council passed bylaw one seven eight six, the master rates bylaw consolidating all fees charged by the municipality. As a result, several municipal policies were reviewed and changes to rates were made and implemented as of January the first, twenty twenty-two. Council gave first reading to bylaw seventeen ninety-seven to amend bylaw seventeen eighty-six, the master rates bylaw, at the March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two council meeting. The updated schedule eight of bylaw seventeen ninety-seven has been included, the amendment to the master rates bylaw, and then includes council's direction to reduce the cost of used culverts to zero charge and fees for the commemorative bench and picnic table program. Our recommended action today is that bylaw seventeen ninety-seven be given second and third reading.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cao.
Mr. Reeve, I'll move second reading.
Thank you, Council Cravieak. That bylaw seventeen ninety-seven, being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville number eighty-seven, to amend bylaw number seventeen eighty-six, master rates bylaw, be given second reading. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, all is in favor? Carrie, I need a third, please.
I'll move third reading.
Thank you, Council Crick moves that bylaw seventeen ninety-seven be given third reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Carrie, thank you. Onto seven four two L.
Thank you. Seven four two is bylaw seventeen ninety-nine, the Agriplex renovation loan bylaw. On March ninth of twenty twenty-two, council discussed the requests made from the Bonneville and District Leisure Facility Corporation, known as C two, for the MD to assist with costs for phase two of the C two Agriplex renovation project, and made the following resolution. The council directs administration to arrange financing options with the Bonneville and District Centennial Center for the Agriplex renovation project to a maximum of three hundred thousand. The municipal government act requires council to pass bylaws regarding loan, loaning funds to nonprofit organizations. And attached for council as appendix A is the bylaw seventeen ninety-nine. This bylaw authorizes funds to the Bonneville and District Leisure Facility Corporation in the amount of three hundred thousand for a term of five years at two point seven one percent per annum with two payments per year. The interest rate and payment schedule are what the MD would pay for to venture through Alberta capital financing as of March fifteenth of twenty twenty-two. The MGA also requires that the loan bylaw be advertised. Administration will advertise the bylaw and local newspapers in the MD of Bonneville's website prior to third and final reading. Our recommended action is a bylaw seventeen ninety-nine, being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville number eighty-seven, to loan funds to the Bonneville and District Leisure Facility Corporation for the Agriplex renovation, be given first reading.
Thank you, looking for a first reading? Thank you, Council Scarsen. Moves that bylaw number seventeen ninety-nine, being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville number eighty-seven, to loan funds to the Bonneville and District Leisure Facility Corporation for the Agriplex renovations to be given first reading. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Onto seven four three, Mr. Cao.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. This is regarding an update on the police funding model. Administration received the police funding model invoice for the annex lands, previously known as ID three forty-nine, in the amount of a hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year from the province of Alberta. The police funding model regulation requires each municipality to contribute a portion of the frontline policing costs based on a fifteen percent recovery for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. The total revenue to be generated by the province from the police funding model is thirty-three million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. The MD received an invoice of five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-two, which is shown in appendix A for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, and additional invoice of a hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars, as shown in appendix B for the annex lands previously referred to as ID three forty-nine. The annexation order, appendix C, did not make any provision for direct costs relating to the annex lands. Essentially, these expenses will now have to be deducted from the three percent administrative fee paid to the MD for the annex lands. The twenty-two budget includes an amount of six hundred and twelve thousand towards the PFM. Administration did not anticipate receiving an invoice for the annex lands separately. The cause and source of funding would be out of our twenty-twenty-two budget, was six hundred and twelve thousand. And our recommended action is that council approves an unbudgeted expenditure in the amount of one hundred thousand for the MD of Bonneville's police, police cost share for the annex lands previously, previously known as the Improvement District number three forty-nine under the police funding model regulation for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year to be funded from the twenty-two operating budget. And you can see council's two options. One is to approve the unbudgeted expenditure, and the other is for us to bring back more information.
Yes, Council Cravieak.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Since most of the money is from this, is going to the three urbans, shouldn't they be sharing this amount of money?
Yep.
Through the reef, to Council Cravieak, I think that's an excellent question. However, that was not ever discussed, nor is it part of the current funding arrangement in the agreed to ID three forty-nine formula.
Mr. Reeve? Yes?
We, but we didn't know that either at the time, though. Like, no one, when all that was being done, we had no idea that they're going to charge us for police funding.
Yeah, well, it's something we can bring up after, but sorry I cut you off there, Council Fadav.
So why was this not covered by the province? Second of all is, can, because they, I mean, they're not going to admit blame. Second is, can we put this in our ICFs at all? And is that a way to try to recoup some of the money?
Well, you should be recouping all the money, because we're not, no, or am I? Or am I stepping on, stepping out of my bounds?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, not quite all, because we're getting some for the, by about ninety some percent, we should be.
Sorry, Mr. Cao.
Currently, the ID three forty-nine annexation agreement, and I think the, I think approximately the number this year was about thirty-three million. We only keep about three percent of that. That was the, that was the agreement. We certainly could try to recoup some of that cost by having a discussion with the city of Cold Lake and the town of Bonneville regarding these additional policing costs. However, and I had nothing to do with the negotiations. I think there are probably counselors today who probably know better what those negotiations look like. But my understanding is that police, that police funding, or that the ID three forty-nine annexation agreement is pretty much carved in stone. So if you wanted to recoup some of that through a discussion with, in agreement with the town of Bonneville, the city of Cold Lake, whether that's through ICFs or through a separate amending agreement to the ID three forty-nine annexation that was just something local, that would certainly be something to discuss. And I would also suggest that the Village of Glendon would be a part of that as well, as they are receiving, as they are receiving funds. This year, Cold Lake received somewhere in the vicinity, and I don't have the exact numbers, so forgive me if they're not to the penny, but around thirteen million. And the town of Bonneville received somewhere between six and seven million. The Village of Glendon was about a million dollars in terms of the ID, the ID three forty-nine money. And now we're being, and we get two point two million this year, which now we're paying another hundred and forty-three thousand for, for the policing costs. Part of the problem with the police, the police funding model regulation is it is based on equalized assessment. I don't know what additional policing, I don't know if there's a speeding moose, or if there's, if there's a, you know.
Sasquatch, I think.
If there's a Sasquatch out there doing something illicit north of the fence, north of the gate. But unfortunately, the formula for all policing in the province is done on equalized assessment. We have more equalized assessment than the other, the other three players at the table. And ergo, we get hit with the bill, which is now, we have no choice right now until we come up with another arrangement. And it wouldn't amend the current ID three forty-nine arrangement. It would be a separate agreement that they're, that they would, they would eat part of that, eat part of that cost. So if council wants to go down that road, I think that's, certainly I just need some direction, and we could certainly reach out, either do that through ICF discussions or through completely, completely separate.
Well, we have to have the discussion with them. It's just like, I'm sure that placing wasn't in stone when we did the, like, there's no, there's no discussion. I guess they probably assume that we know that that's coming, but how do you assume that?
Well, I, what I would suggest to council is the policing funding model was in place previous to the annexation of ID three forty-nine. This should have been part of the conversation when ID three forty-nine was annexed. We've been in the policing funding model now for at least two years. So this was not new information, it should have been.
Should have been caught then.
It should have been caught during the ID three forty-nine agreements that, that this would, that all of this, or that part of this would have been, would have been billable and requisitiable to the MD, when in actual fact, if they use the same formula that we use for giving, the, for sharing the tax assessment, then we should also be sharing the, the.
Well, that's, that's fair.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So I just kind of ask, and I mean, I think you should have a discussion about this, and you brought it up. Like, you're just kind of joking about Sasquatch run across the range or whatever. But I question what frontline policing costs are there on the range? The police can't even get onto the range because you need range passes and blah, blah, blah. Like, I'd like them to prove to us that you actually even, you're actually spending any money at all.
So to council, I, as much as I appreciate the, you know, the feeling about that, the fact is that there are many rural municipalities who are paying way more for. I will give you an example, my time at Rocky View. We had more equalized assessment in the city of Verdry with a city of seventy to eighty thousand people. I can tell you where most of the policing was required. City of Verdry used RCMP, they didn't have a local police force. So most policing takes place in an urban area. But Rocky County paid almost three times as much for policing. So when it goes on equalized assessment.
Understand.
Sense tends to.
It doesn't tend to be on front and center.
Council Fadav, then Council Cravieak.
I think we start a conversation with the, with the ministry to see if we can do, do an amendment to that. Because, I mean, we're just a pass-through for the money. We're not the ones that are actually spending the money, somebody else is. So I think we need to figure something out.
Yeah, Council Cravieak.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. I think assessment, of course, is a very pro way of requesting funding. Could we perhaps have a resolution at the RMA to change the way policing costs are being administered, or?
Through the chair to Council Cravieak, I'll double check, but I believe that resolution has gone to the floor and has already passed. I will double check. I believe that that happened at one of the virtual RMA conferences in the middle of the pandemic. I'll certainly check, but I believe that that resolution has come and gone. It's come and it's been passed by the floor already, but I'll certainly double check that. And if not, it would be a good resolution.
Yeah, thank you. Could we also, Mr. Reeve, perhaps, without going this way, write a letter to the three urbans requesting a pro-rated amount from each one? They might, they might agree to it.
Through the chair, to council, absolutely, a direction from council to have a letter with the reef signature requesting that, using the same formula for what they receive. what they received is to cover the additional cost. Obviously, we'll, we'll end up paying at that point three percent of this, of this bill, but three percent of one hundred and forty-three thousand is quite palatable.
Yeah, well, that's our share of nothing, and it'll be their share of nothing, nothing too, but they get, they get paid for it, so, yeah.
Would you like me to make a motion to that effect, or?
Do we need a motion elf or something like that?
To the Reeve, I would suggest a motion directing administration to draft a letter for the Reeve signature to the three urbans, to be involved in the recovery of this one hundred and forty-three thousand. A motion would be great. Also, a motion to accept this update for information would also be great.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Reeve. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Cravieak makes a motion that council approves the unbudgeted expenditures in the amount of one hundred thousand for the MD of Bonneville policing costs. Sorry, yep.
Sorry, I'm not making, I was going to make the motion to write a letter to...
But we needed this one, too.
Okay, go on.
Okay, you don't want to make that one?
I can, too, but somebody else may want to.
Okay. Same motion, cost share for the annexed lands previously known as Improvement District number three, four nine, under the Police Funding Model Regulations for the two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two fiscal year to be funded from the two thousand twenty-two operating budget. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Kerry.
Just wondering, Mr. Reeve, if we didn't support this motion, what would happen? They'll just take it someplace else, right?
Yes, through the chair to Counsel Cravieak and to the rest of council, the, this is a requisition surround, that comes through a regulation of the province. If council didn't approve it, it would, it would essentially be irrelevant at that point, because the province would either demand payment or withhold other grant money in lieu of, so I...
It's not wise not to do it.
I don't, it's not, it's particularly if we think we can recoup a great deal of the cost by working with our urban neighbors, I would suggest that we pay it, and then we try to find other ways to, to ease the pain.
Okay, thank you. I'll make the other motion as well, to write the, as you directed, can you repeat your motion, please?
To direct administration... Oh, you've got one already? Okay, super. Okay. Perfect.
Want to put something there in the same formula as the funds received, or you'll...
I, I, we'll write the letter that way, but I think the motion directs us to get started on the letters.
This is good. You like that? Okay. Thank you. Counselor Cravieak moves that council directs administration to draft letters from the Reeve to the three neighboring urban municipalities requesting funding support for the policing cost share for the annexed lands previously known as Improvement District number three, four, nine. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Kerry, thank you. Seven point five, seven point five one. Morning, or good afternoon?
Good afternoon, Mr. Reeve, Members of Council. We started in the morning.
Yes, we did. I'm all right.
All right. This RFD is for the Cold Lake Regional Utility Services Commission, twenty twenty-two service fees update. At the March third, twenty twenty-one committee meeting of council, council asked for an explanation of the higher rates of water being charged to the MD of Bonneville versus other rates shown in the Cold Lake Regional Utilities Services Commission correspondence. Appendix A shows the, shows the rates for twenty twenty-two being charged to all consumers of water being supplied by the CLR USC. The rate for four wing Cold Lake is two dollars and twenty-six, two dollars, twenty-six cents per thousand gallons due to a lump sum that was paid toward the water treatment plan upgrade by four wing, by four wing many years ago. The rate for the City of Cold Lake, Cold Lake First Nations, and the Bonneville Regional Water Services Commission is two dollars and sixty-one cents per thousand gallons. However, BRWSC has charged a ten percent administration fee in addition to the two dollars and sixty-one cents, as per the water supply agreement between the commissions, for a total price of two dollars and eighty-seven cents per thousand gallons. There is no impact to the, to the budget, and administration is recommending that council accepts the Cold Lake Regional Utilities Services Commission twenty twenty-two service fees update as information.
Thank you. Yes?
I'll just note, we didn't get the appendix, it was, it was actually the wrong map, some we put, stuck in a Barrier Lake map or something.
Appendix A?
Sorry?
That's what I, that's what I've got for appendix A is a map.
It's the Barrier Lake.
It just doesn't show here, you described it well, but it was a map.
Mine, mine doesn't.
That's what I got.
Mine's good. Yours is no good?
No. Or is that in your...
It was just here, it was, it just ended up on mine as a map, I'm not sure what...
Yeah, I'm good.
You have a map? Oh?
That's okay.
I didn't know what you were showing me, you were showing me some kind of thing, I'm like, what do you, what do you...
That's what I got instead of the, anyway, I think you described it well.
Very good. I just need a motion for information.
Sorry, I hope that answered the question from, from the council motion, or from the council action.
Yep. Okay, Counselor Crick makes a motion that council accepts the Cold Lake Regional Utility Service Commission two thousand twenty-two service fees update as information. Any discussion on this motion? I see none, all those in favor? Kerry, thank you. What are we at, seven two, seven two, no, seven five two for gravel trailers, I believe?
Correct, thank you, Mr. Reeve. This is for the purchase of a gravel trailer. So, Infrastructure Services had budgeted in twenty twenty-two to replace a gravel truck and trailer lost in an accident in twenty twenty-one. Infrastructure Services had informally sourced out some of the replacements for gravel trailer, as the initial assessment for, of prices was under the procurement threshold, this item was not tendered publicly, and we, we received four quotes for tri-axle gravel pup trailers in Appendix A, and I hope the Appendix A is the right one for everybody up there.
It's a printed one, so we're good, yep.
With, with supply issues being a concern, administration is needing to place this order to secure immediate delivery. So, a summary of the prices were as followed. A Ren Tri pup with air ride suspension for fifty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars, Ren Tri pup with spring suspension, fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars, Midland Tri pup with air ride suspension, fifty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars, and a Lowline Tri pup with air ride suspension, sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. In discussion with the operators, an air ride suspension unit would be the best suited for MD operations. Therefore, administration is recommending the purchase of the Ren Tri pup with air ride suspension for the quoted price of fifty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars from Western Sterling Trucks Limited. This report is for the purchase of the gravel trailer only, and administration will return to council with options for a gravel truck after tendering occurs. Funding, funds for the purchase will come from the twenty twenty-two capital budget, and administration is recommending that council approves the purchase of a Ren Tri pup gravel trailer with air ride suspension from Western Sterling Trucks Limited in the amount of fifty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars to be funded from the twenty twenty-two capital budget.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Deputy Reeve.
Yeah, I just had a question about the, the air ride versus the springs, is that just like a maintenance thing or something that's better, it's easier to maintain, or?
Through the Reeve to, to Deputy Reeve Swiger, for operations, hauling and, and the ride, the bounce of the trailer, the air ride suspension, according to the operators, was superior to the springs.
Oh, yeah. I, I was surprised when you could find even springs anymore. It's, it's crazy, yep. Yes, Counselor Carson, sorry.
So, I don't know, maybe this is a silly question, but, you know, lost in an accident, so, like, there's no insurance claim for that then, or?
Through the Reeve to Counselors Carson, yes, there was insurance money that was given back to us in the amount of, off the top of my head, I, I'm thinking it was around a hundred and sixty, seventy thousand we recouped from the, from the loss of the truck and the trailer. So, that's gone into the, into, I'm guessing, reserves, but we budgeted for the replacement, I think we had three hundred and fifty thousand or three hundred and sixty thousand-ish in the twenty twenty-two capital budget for the replacement of a truck and a pup, and this fifty-six thousand will just come off of that budgeted amount of three hundred-plus thousand, and then the remainder will be for the, for the truck when we decide to, to tender it out. But as it sits right now, it's, it's going to be difficult to tender something out for this year, so. I hope that answered your question.
Sure. Yeah, you didn't get enough, is what you're saying.
From, through the Reeve, from insurance, correct, correct. The replacement, it wasn't insured, insured for replacement value, correct.
Looking for a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve this.
Okay, Counselor Crick makes a motion that council approves the purchase of the Ren Tri pup gravel trailer with air ride suspension from Western Sterling Truck Limited in the amount of fifty-six nine to be funded from the two thousand twenty-two capital budget. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Kerry, thank you, gentlemen. On to seven five three, that'd be Ardmore Fort Kent.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. This RFD is for the water distribution pump replacement at Ardmore and Fort Kent. During the twenty twenty-two MD budget deliberations, council approved a total of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for water distribution pump replacements at Ardmore and Fort Kent water stations. In refining the requirements of the pumps and the increasing supply issues, the cost of the project had increased. The total cost for the full upgrade is estimated at a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Ardmore is seventy-four thousand, two hundred and ten, Fort Kent sixty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars. Administration is requesting an additional twenty-five thousand dollars be added to the capital budget, new water, new initiatives for water, to have the total budget of a hundred and forty-five thousand for the pump replacements. Funding to come from the equipment replacement program, and administration is recommending that council approves the unbudgeted expenditure for the purchase of the water distribution pumps at the Ardmore and Fort Kent water stations in the amount of twenty-five thousand to be funded from the equipment replacement program.
Thank you, Counselor Fedeav.
In the future, is there, like, is there a reason why you're coming back for this? This is part of operations? Is there, would there, you know, would we not have this in operations plan, and instead of coming to council, it's like, it's not as if we say, oh, yeah, we don't, we don't need it, we need it, and it's part of, it's part of operational, I think this, the budget items should be different than what it is.
Mr. CEO.
So, through the Reeve, to Counsel Fedeav, so this item was budgeted last year as a capital budget item, and it, we cannot move things from capital to operating budget without council approval. So, because it was approved originally as a capital project, and it entirely could have been a, it could have gone into an operating budget for sure, but just because of the way it was budgeted for, any change to a capital project has to come back to council for approval. Lesson learned, next year, we would probably do this through an operating budget instead, but this, this is where we're at this year.
Yeah, thanks, I just kind of, you don't have to wait for council to say that it's, it's, it's needed, it's needed.
It's been a long road for Mr. Vespolco, trust me.
So, I'll definitely make the motion and go ahead with this.
You're going to make the motion, Kerry?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. So, Counselor Fedeav makes the motion that council approves the unbudgeted expenditures for the purchase of a water distribution pumps at the Ardmore and Fort Kent water stations, the amount of twenty-five thousand to be funded from the equipment replacement program. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Kerry, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, Members of Council, much appreciated.
Hey, good job.
Thank you.
Mr. CEO, seven six one.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, Members of Council. This is bylaw number seventeen ninety-three, amending and repealing bylaw with the redesignation of the MD of Bonneville's Development Authority and Subdivision Authority from the Municipal Planning Commission to council. Existing municipal legislation needs to be adjusted to reflect this change. As such, administration has prepared bylaw seventeen ninety-three, which amends and repeals current MD bylaws in response to this change. So, bylaw number seventeen ninety-three amends current MD bylaws as follows. Bylaw seventeen eighty-seven, the procedural bylaw subsection six point nine is deleted and replaced to update the agenda to include development applications and subdivision applications in the order of business which council deals with at a meeting. Bylaw number seventeen forty-eight, boards and committees bylaw subsection three point two A is deleted to remove the acknowledgement of MPC as a standing board committee in the MD. Bylaw seventeen ninety-three also repeals bylaw number thirteen forty-four, which establishes the Municipal Planning Commission for the MD, and bylaw seventeen ninety-three is reviewed by the committee as a whole on February sixteenth and received first reading by council on February twenty-third of two thousand twenty-two. Our recommendation is that bylaw seventeen ninety-three, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven, to amend the procedural bylaw and boards and committees bylaw and repeal the Municipal Planning Commission bylaw, be given second and third reading.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. I'll make the motion to go give second reading. Okay, thank you. Deputy Reeve Swiger makes the motion that bylaw number seventeen ninety-three, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven, to amend the procedural bylaw and boards and committees bylaw and repeal the Municipal Planning Commission bylaw to be given second reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Kerry, need third?
Yeah, I'm a third.
Thank you. Counselor Carson, that bylaw number seventeen ninety-three be given third reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Kerry, thank you. On to seven six two.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, Members of Council. This is regarding the Bonneville Gear Grabbers, a request for commitment. The Bonneville Gear Grabbers Car Club presented the council as a delegation to regular meeting of council on February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two. They provided an overview and of their annual drag racing weekend and an update on the upcoming planned events for two thousand twenty-two. As part of their presentation, Bonneville Gear Grabbers also brought forward interest in securing a long-term commitment from the MD of Bonneville for support of the event. Following the delegation by the Bonneville Gear Grabbers at the February twenty-third regular meeting of council, a motion was passed directing administration to bring back additional information regarding a long-term commitment from the MD of Bonneville for the Bonneville Gear Grabbers Annual Drag Race Weekend Event. Administration has prepared a draft memorandum of understanding for council's review and consideration. The agreement clearly outlines the level of support the MD of Bonneville provide to the club for their annual test and tune and drag racing, drag racing weekend events moving forward. Our recommended actions, the council approves the MOU between the MD and the Gear Grabbers Car Club as presented, and directs administration to forward the agreement to the club for their consideration and execution.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. Looking for a motion?
Mr. Reeve, yeah, just, the only, the condition, conditions pair to number eight, I, I just hope that, Mr. CEO, that doesn't leave us in a bit of a predicament, or, or them in a bit of a predicament where they expect support from us and then we can't, or, you know, I just don't want to get into a position where it's pending availability at discretion of CEO. I'm not sure, I, I guess you're happy with that, I'm just not sure if I am. I'm not sure kind of support we have to, we would supply.
Through the Reeve, to Deputy Reeve Swiger and to the rest of council, what we've done, particularly last year, is we provided probably, I'd say, five or six of our operations staff and probably five or six pickup trucks, and the big thing we did last year is we helped move the bleachers and then remove the bleachers back from the, the egg grounds back to, to the airport and then back to the, that was really the big thing that we did for them last year. Other than, other than Counselor Fedeav and the CEO, parking cars and doing all those other things all weekend long, the, the vast majority of the work was, was helping with the bleachers and getting, and getting the, the bleachers back to where they belong.
Yes, Counsel Fedeav.
Yeah, I think that kind of, kind of comes down back to Counselor Carson's, you know, question about bleachers and how easy it is to move, so again, with a volunteer group, but it was pretty tough to get these guys on their days off to move the stuff there, and when could they do it? And being that it's our airport, how could it navigate it with, with us doing it? It just took that completely out of the question, and it's just one thing that they did not have to worry about, and...
Yeah, there's lots to worry about in a day.
Yeah.
When you're putting on that kind of event. All right, just looking for a motion, then? Yeah? Okay, Counselor Fedeav makes the motion that council approves a memorandum of understanding between the MD of Bonneville and Bonneville Gear Grabbers Car Club as presented, and directs administration to forward the agreement to the club for their consideration and execution. Any discussion on this? Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Since we're on this, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, probably was gonna say what you were saying, and I would like to make another motion too, that would direct administration to bring back some, um, maybe some pricing on some bleachers that we had talked about in the past that are maybe a little bit more easily mobile and, and could we use at different events? I know that's definitely one thing that a lot of events are always looking for. And if there was something that was easy to, to move around and, um, either hook onto the back of a truck or whatever it might be, but, uh, maybe they can bring us back some options for, um, consideration, I guess, right, so.
Yeah, and Mr. Reeve, uh, uh, to Counselor Skarsen, we had planned to do that for budget. If council would like that sooner than that, we certainly can. But our, uh, we have started that investigation, but our plan was to bring that back as part of, as part of our fall budget. But if council would like it sooner, uh, we, we certainly could.
I don't know if it really matters, it, um, it probably would be unlikely to get any for this summer anyways. Uh, so if you think by, you know, when would you, if you had them at budget, you would have to order them, you wouldn't be able to order them until after budget was approved in April, kind of thing, like.
Well, if, we would order them like we do, and so if budget was passed in November-ish, the timeframe, we normally, we'd get stuff ordered right away. We have done some initial, um, poking around, and a bleacher that would hold about two hundred people, uh, portable aluminum, they run around twenty-two to twenty-five thousand dollars per bleacher. So if you wanted four bleachers so you could hold eight hundred people, well, you could take it from there. If you, um, you know, if you had a hundred thousand dollars spent, you could buy four bleachers. Um, um, so that's, that's some of our initial, some of our initial thoughts. Um, there are some possibilities of having them fabricated relatively locally, but we don't know if that that's just as cost effective as, uh, as, as, as ordering them from someone who does them prefab, so. Um, uh, but, uh, I, I think if we, uh, got direction through budget and then from there ordered them, they'd probably be here in time uh, for the spring. I, my, my contacts did not indicate that this was, this is just aluminum and a welder. Uh, that, that's, it's not really a supply chain issue.
Yeah, well, if, if council's fine with that, I'm fine with that too, I guess.
Okay, Counselor Fideev?
Yeah, uh, my question was to, uh, C E O, Al Hogan, in regards to, I, have you had a chance to talk to Mr. Nagoya in regards to the stuff they had in their boneyard?
I have, uh, I have sent a message to, uh, Mr. Nagoya, and I have not received any information back yet.
Uh, I was driving around Coal Lake and, and their boneyard, they have grant stands, so I was like, hey, wait a minute. So I just wanted to see what they were used for or what they weren't used for, or they have, uh, they tore down from someplace, or if there's any kind of future consideration that they're gonna use it for, so. That was a good opportunity to, uh, maybe work with them, and maybe they could donate bleachers.
Okay, well, Al, you'll find out information in the next upcoming, uh, you know, meeting of some kind. All right, thank you. Uh, seven-point-seven, seven-point-seven-one?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. So, uh, the next three items are invitations for council to Coal Lake Hearts for Healthcare Gala, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. At the March twenty-third council meeting, council approves supporting the Coal Lake Heart for Healthcare Gala for a total value of fifteen thousand, which included the purchase of two tables. Administration is requesting attendees to fill the two tables of eight people, so that would be sixteen people in total. And number two is the Ronald McDonald House Charities Lakeland Charity Golf Classic, June eighteenth. Um, the, um, through policy three C zero one-two Community Action Grant, approved sponsorship in the amount of three thousand for the Lakeland Charity Golf Classic at the Coal Lake Golf and Winter Resort on June eighteenth. The sponsorship includes two complimentary teams to be registered for the tournament. Um, Ronald McDonald, um, Charities is requesting players for the two teams of four, so another eight people. I would say that last year, there was four of us that attended, Counselor Kreviak, myself, Counselor Swiger, and previous counselor, um, um, Jubenville, and we had a, it was a great day. It was a, it was a, it was a really fun day. Um, and then number three, City of Coal Lake, the Canada Day Event on July first. City of Coal Lake is currently planning a two thousand twenty-two Canada Day celebration and requests a representative from the M D to say a few words during the official address at approximately eleven A M on Friday, July first, two thousand twenty-two.
I guess we just need a motion for all three then, is that what's written or not?
Uh, we need to, uh, Mr. Reeve, we probably need to, and I don't know if it's gonna be possible to do it today, but we need to start putting names to tables and names to golf carts.
Before?
Yeah, they're, they're gonna, it's gonna be, uh, otherwise.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
So do we need a, a motion then?
Uh, just a motion on who's going in, so there's sixteen.
No, just to.
Yeah, so the council approves, council's, okay, well, we, I guess that's, and then we could, we could get names after that, absolutely.
Then they can do the.
Very good.
House cleaning after?
Yeah.
I need a motion for, to, for all three. Yes, Counselor Kreviak? You make the motion, thank you. Counselor Kreviak makes the motion that council approves, uh, council to attend these events as followed, one through three. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. So, uh, who, who wants to go to the Coal Lake Hearts for Healthcare Gala? And your wives? Okay, so girlfriend, that's the same one. One, two, three, four, five, Darcy?
No.
No? Uh, I guess we don't know, Donnie, more than likely, I don't, I don't know.
And, and my wife and I would be happy to attend.
Okay, so that's six right now, so we need two more, two more sets? Okay, so I guess you'll get ahold of, uh, Donnie, and then, uh, you can fill in the last one, all right? All right, then, uh, for, uh, I'll go golfing at Ronald McDonald, we need eight or four, I guess.
Yeah, I'll go.
So we got three right here?
I'd go.
Okay, do you, you want some other council?
Should be, there's, if, if all of council, myself went, we'd have two, uh, we'd have two foursomes.
Which, uh, golf course is it at?
The, um, Golf and Winter Club.
Mr., I would go, but there's four already, so that's fine.
Well, there's eight, room for eight.
There's, there's, there's eight.
But are we going to be able to get another three?
I'm sure your staff could.
If, if council, if council can't, if all of council doesn't want to go, then I'm, I'm sure, uh, I'm sure I can talk, uh, Mr. Vespolco or, or Ernie Mercier, or Stephanie, or Joe, I'm sure I can, I'm sure I can fill, I'm sure with whoever from council wants to attend, I'm sure I can fill the other cart, um, with staff.
What, is that a Saturday, what day is that?
Um.
June eighteen.
June eighteen, so we need a calendar. Yeah, that's a Sat, that's a Saturday.
Your birthday in June or what?
Yeah, no, no, it's not.
The way you're counting.
It's a Saturday? Yeah.
All right, Saturday.
Put my name down for now, and if I can't, I'll cancel, but, uh, Stephanie can go for me.
Okay, Josh, Josh as well, and then you'll get ahold of Donnie.
Yeah.
I know he hates golfing with a passion.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, Ernie's a good golfer too, where he goes.
With a passion?
Sure, he doesn't, he hates golfing.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
No, he just doesn't like it.
Most of the bad experiences with the passion.
Well, if you never golf in your life, and it's sometimes pretty intimidating, I guess.
Yeah.
I golf twice, three times a year, and it's still lots of, uh, lots of balls going where they're not supposed to be going, yes.
You're like me.
So, uh, also, uh, City of Coal Lake, Canadian Day Event, need to speak there? So I can, I can speak there, I guess, on behalf of the M D. Uh, float, well, a little bit off the topic, but floats, we're gonna have floats for both, uh, more than likely, there's gonna be parades in Canada Day this year. And we'll be right rigged up again to go to both. Three, Glendon as well?
For what?
Uh, Canadian, Canada Day, Canadian, Canada Day, July first, right?
Well, is the Town of Bonneville having something also, or?
Well, I, I'm.
Usually there's time to do both. Every other year, there's usually time to do both.
Yeah.
Last time they had, we, some of us stayed in Bonneville, some went to Coal Lake, so.
Okay, but as long as we have floats for all whoever.
Sure, I'll go, so I'll clear, yeah.
Well, we're more, they're asking for someone to speak at Coal Lake for this one.
Oh, you'll speak, yeah, you're, you're, you'll speak, yeah.
Because I went off topic there, all right, um.
You get Mike all confused over there.
I'm confusing myself, let alone Mike. Uh, number eight, eight point, go ahead, Mr. C E O.
Thank you, uh, eight, uh, all of eight is just correspondence information, you can see the correspondence report. Number one is an email, a report from Laika, uh, and another email and report from Laika, email from the National Police Foundation, uh, proposal to join our call to action there, uh, opposed to, to the Alberta Provincial Police Force. Letter from the Bonneville Friendship Center, invitation to the groundbreaking somewhere, that's already taking place. Letter from the Town of Bonneville regarding the invitation to the Day of Mourning and the Council Action Report. And just a motion to accept for information.
I just, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just comment the Laika one, there is a link there that, uh, you can click on, it's a safe link. Um, it, it's asking for input if you have any on their integrated watershed management plan. So, you know, if anybody wants to take a few minutes and kind of read through that, you know, the Reeve's kind of been through it, because they had a session on it.
You bet, long day.
And I have too, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's there if you'd like to take a look at it.
Thank you, looking for a motion? Thank you, Counselor Crick, for making that motion, that council accepts. That was on the screen a few seconds ago. All of that. Uh, any discussion? Nope, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Uh, on to, uh, probably action reports, uh, Counselor Kreviak? Oh, I'm sorry, yep, read the wrong thing, reports from members of council. Thank you for correcting me.
That's okay, uh, I'll try to, uh, be quick here, I have half an hour report, but I'll try to cut that back.
That's okay, we all have a half an hour report. They have an hour.
F C S S meeting, uh, business as usual, there's good, we are hosting, uh, a luncheon for the volunteers on April twenty-eighth, and you, as the Reeve asked, to make a little speech there as well, as you know.
Yep.
Uh, we had a final run of the Old Green Chair. There's a song in there somewhere, I should talk to, I should talk to Brett Kissel. Uh, Mr. Hogan and I were the last ones to come down on the Old Green Chair. Uh, we had a meeting with A H S to discuss negotiations for E M S. And they want to extend our contract for another nineteen months from September first of this year to March thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four. But we were very strong, we want to negotiate a contract, not just to agree what they want, uh, what they want, demands they want. Also, Dr. Verna Yu, who's the president and C E O of A H S, she was let go, and with a healthy severance as well. I attended a cake auction in Glendon, a third of the proceeds from that go to fund, uh, Ukraine. And there was one cake that sold for eleven hundred dollars. So that was really, really good. I bid that person up to one thousand seventy-five, and they said, let her have it. We had a tour of the Coppola Building. Mr. Haney laid out the template with regards to where the nine-on-one E M S and B R F A will be housing, will be housed. It was an excellent tour. We had A S, A S B meeting, refunding the Grazian School for Women, uh, the forage, the five local clubs, uh, Bonneville Farmer's Market every Tuesday. Local A S B tour will be held August the eleventh of this year, after a two-year hiatus, that's August the eleventh. And May twenty-ninth will be a district forage, um, the sale there, um, uh, May twenty-ninth at the Coal Lake Exhibition Park. And the, uh, A S B is sponsoring the supper for forty-five hundred dollars, and that's, that's it for me.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Skarsen?
Just, uh, just a quick question there.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, yeah, with, uh, with the tours you guys had for nine, so where's nine-one-one going? The whole upstairs floor then, or?
No, no, just the one room in the upstairs floor. Uh, it's, we have the nine-one-one here.
Big room.
But the nine-one-one here, the room is very, very small, and that room maybe is like three times larger, it's a fairly large room.
Second floor. Have you been in the building?
Oh, I've been in the building, yeah.
So that major, big office there with the washroom and shower and all that stuff? That's the, predominantly the, uh.
On the north side of the second floor.
Okay, I'm confused because I, okay, I thought we needed like four thousand square feet for it.
You should have, uh, yeah, it's, it's fairly large, but it's way larger than the one that we have here. They should have came with a tour, uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just curious.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Counselor Skarsen?
Yeah, it was, uh, a tour, I was there too as well, it was interesting to see, I've never been in that building before, so, uh, it, it looks like it'll be a really nice setup when they're done there, so that's good. And, um, so I'm really happy about how all that turned out, I guess, so. Uh, I, there was a library meeting that I had to regret on because I had an awards banquet, that I got to listen to a very good guest speaker, uh, speak on, so that was good. And then, um, so then the only one was a seat two, and I, you know, the only thing worth mentioning there is that the Agriplex kind of construction, I believe, started yesterday, mon, or two days ago on Monday, and, uh, with demolition and all that stuff, so, um, the goal is to have that, uh, ready for, for drop-in sports come fall, come September, so, good luck with that.
Counselor, sorry? Uh, Deputy Reeve Swiger?
Oh, that's it, yeah, for another few day, few more days, right?
Yep.
Uh, SWANA, Solid Waste Association of North America, so conference in town. And they're, they're talking about recycling and, uh, circular economies and extended producer responsibilities. Uh, so lots of kind of trash talking and stuff, but, um, there's some, some good sessions that you can attend. And I'm gonna tell you a little bit about this one.
No pun intended.
No.
Go ahead.
So Trail, there's a, there's a, uh, speaker from Trail B C, uh, from Metal Tech Alley. Uh, anyway, Trail B C apparently is a, is a mining location, and they've got a top world-class mining operation. But because of that, there's all kinds of other industries coming into the area, and one of them they kind of talked about was battery recycling. And, uh, it was an issue for them, so when they're recycling lithium batteries from, uh, electronic vehicles, they have an issue that to transport those batteries for recycling across Canada, they have to transport them down through the States because Canada doesn't have the proper regulations, from problems to problems, to allow the transport of batteries across, uh, across the country. So it just kind of is interesting to me that they could do it in the States but not in Canada, so.
And they can ride in a vehicle but not ride in the back of a thing.
So it's just weird, or it's like our federal government doesn't quite understand yet the issues that are being caused uh, by them not having kind of regulations across the country. I mean, it goes the same with pipelines and stuff too, we're having those issues, but. So that, anyway, that's a, that's a good, uh, session to go to or a good conference to go to, and there's all kinds of topics and things to, to talk about, and they had speakers from all across Canada talking about extended producer responsibility, which in short, means if, uh, they're trying to get their, the manufacturers or, or the producers of products to be responsible for the product once it's thrown in the garbage, so. Because we throw them in the garbage, we shouldn't be, the, the producer should be taking those products back and reusing, recycling. One of the ones, and Josh and I talked a little bit about greenhouse gas legislation. The federal government has new legislation for greenhouse gases, uh, that they're kind of working on, about the carbon offsets, that sort of thing. I spoke with a guy from Blue Source, and Blue Source is a company who buys and sells carbon credits, or they're actually a, a trader for you, so you go to Blue Source, and they'll look at your municipality or whatever and say, well, we can, you've got some green initiatives, we can get you some carbon credits and sell it to somebody else, so they're buyers and sellers of carbon credits. They talked about fifty bucks a ton in two thousand twenty-one and about a hundred and seventy bucks a ton in two thousand thirty, so they'll just keep going up in value. So that was SWANA, the other one was Munich Core, so, uh, stronger Munich Core meeting. They're working, the M D's, uh, has kind of been working with, I think through Brian Vespolco, with Munich Core about the signage and stuff, so. Uh, Munich Core is, is, uh, putting up new signs along the trail to kind of bring them up to a standard that everybody can refer to and use. Uh, one of the interesting things that Smokey, and this came out of Munich Core, Smokey Lake County is doing this, they've applied for the Municipal Climate Action Change Change Center Grant for electric car charging, and they were, they were accepted for, for these sites, so they got one in Vilna that they're putting in, one in Wasatna, Town of Smokey Lake, and then Smokey Lake County will get one. And I heard apparently that Coal Lake applied and didn't get, they got refused, so I don't get it. Not sure why, so you can drive your electric car to Coal Lake, but you can never get home because you can't charge it. That's the joke, but that's kind of true. And Munich Core's working on maintenance agreements for all the municipalities, so Munich Core will be presenting sometime in the future, uh, with these new, uh, maintenance agreements, and they're also gonna show their, uh, their ten-year strategic plan on. And they're also gonna show their, uh, their ten-year strategic plan on the, on the Iron Horse Trail. Uh, they also applied for an active transportation fund to develop, uh, staging area in Cold Lake and also, uh, trestle at the Beaver River or the trestle on the, on the, uh, trail there. They're gonna look at developing both ends of that trestle for whatever day, day use kind of, picnicking or whatever they think may work. And then I had another meeting with Riverlands Trail Group and, uh, again, they're, they're the guys that are actually gonna be replacing all those signs along the trail. Riverland Trail actually does work with Munichor and they're the group that actually maintains the trails. And that's about it, thank you.
Councillor Critt?
Um, let's see here. Yeah, had a, a meeting in Saint Paul, economic development meeting, that was kind of interesting. Uh, just talking about, we're competing with, uh, globally for, for business and stuff, so not just necessarily our, our neighbors and other municipalities. And then there was a, uh, on the twenty-sixth, there was a supper at the Beaver Dam Hall and they're looking, hoping to get the roof fixed on the hall because it's starting to leak, so, so it was interesting. Had a few, well, I think most of the meetings I've been, been mentioned already because I've been with other councillors at them, but I had a few, uh, one lady called me a shit. She had a concern, um, Blue Source is like, you know, saying sells carbon credits and something, I don't fully understand them, I tried to look, look them up online. But they're, uh, apparently they, according to the lady that called me, they bought the rights to the carbon credits off the trees on Elizabeth Maydy settlement. And there's some, some other work going on out there that she was concerned was that our, the trucks be using our roads and wearing the roads out maybe, so. I don't know if that's, if we hear something, we can look into that too, but. Um, and then the Fort Kent mailboxes, they've been getting broken, I guess, about every week since Christmas time, so. Hoping that those get fixed up and our council sent a letter to Canada Post asking about that and I stopped in the post office and it should be done in about a month, so hopefully that happens. Yeah, I think that's all I'll save for now.
Okay, councillor Fideev?
Chamber A G M on March twenty-fourth, as well as well-attended, everybody, I think it's one of the first events that a lot of people seen, so it was good to see a lot of industry partners there. F C S S, uh, was on, uh, this Monday and, uh, the mayor's having a volunteer appreciation dinner going on on April twenty-fourth that Reeve will be attending on my behalf because, uh, I have to be a taxi, so, thanks.
Okay.
You're volunteering.
Is well said though. Very well said, yes. All right, uh, did a C two part nine training on March twenty-fourth, uh, I think Darcy was, uh, with that as well. I don't know what we learned, maybe a little bit, but I don't know if we learned a lot, but we learned a little bit. Uh, also, uh, councillor Kreviak mentioned the Ski Hill Green Chair. Uh, just wanna thank, uh, the previous council for the new chairlift and the decision they made. And then I overheard someone, uh, talking, anyone with Bowen or whatever, oh, what color is the chairlift gonna be? Well, I guess it's gonna be green, uh, again, so it's not confusing, so it's gonna be green, the green chairlift again.
I asked for purple, but they said no.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mike. It's probably Ukrainian colors. Uh, Greater North Foundation, uh, we had a meeting on Zoom or whatever and I offered that we could ho, host the next meeting here, so. Uh, Greater, uh, North Foundation is coming here in, uh, May and we're hosting them here in the new, uh, boardroom. Also, uh, I just, I, I went on behalf of councillor Swigert to Laika, um, he, he could not attend. And, uh, it's a, it was a long meeting, a lot of information, lots to inhale. Uh, I think the, one of the greatest statements I heard there was from a gentleman from the town of Bonneville here. Uh, he said, I wish we would just pick one or two things and do them, you know, like superior and instead of a hundred things kind of thing, it just, let's pick something and do it. And instead of all, it's like you have, and I had to agree with him, there's so many, so much information, so many things on the go and you probably maybe agree with me too. If we just pick something on, on behalf of the whole area and get it done, I think you could accomplish a lot more, but, uh, that's the first Laika meeting I ever been to, so, you know, I, I can't speak to more than that, but that's just a comment that I th, thought was very, uh, wisely. If we could just, we talked about, you know, the project in Moose Lake that we've been kicking around and, uh, you know, where the, the amount, uh, comes into the lake and it's something that we can discuss as a council some more. Also, uh, can, I just wanna say congratulations to the Jaguar, um, girls team, uh, they won the provincials in Cold Lake. I was, uh, very blessed to attend that and I was in with the opening ceremonies and just a quick shout out to a girl named Bella Corey, she's the one that really got me involved, uh, uh, very nice young lady that's, uh, from the Cold Lake area. She lives in the M D by Alexandria Hall there. Also, I just have to get a shout out to Mayor Copeland, I thought he did a superior job, uh, doing, on the opening ceremonies and, uh, you know, the city of Cold Lake for the job well done, hosting, uh, you know, I'm sure it's the Jaguar team that hosts, but the city of Cold Lake had to do a lot of work and there was, uh, also a cheerleading thing happening at the same te, time, so that energy, uh, center was just hopping, it was pretty cool to be a part of, uh. And the girls won, of course, and, uh, one of my favorite moments of it was, uh, I got to share an opening ceremony on behalf of the M D and then, uh, uh, Mayor Craig Copeland and myself, uh, decided there was, um, I had asked the young girl, what was her goal of winning provincial, provincials from, on behalf of the Cold Lake team, the Jaguars, and she said, I just wanna win it for my coach and, uh, I, you know, I didn't know at the time and I said, well, which one was he, uh, on the ice? And she said, no, he passed away, uh, you know, during our season here. And I think, uh, councillor Skarson had mentioned to me that, uh, this, Mr. Dejolay passed away during the hockey season. So, uh, we decided to bring, uh, a girl from each team, uh, his number, uh, Mr. Dejolay's number was number seven when he used to play hockey. So I, I went through the, you know, the teams and I tried to pick every number seven to come out, uh, from, one from each team. And then if they never had a number seven, I, I chose the number eighteen because, uh, his daughter had the number eighteen. So we brought him in the middle and then, uh, I was just happened to be talking in the stands to a, a young lady from the Fairview area and she had also lost her husband and she had two daughters, uh, playing. So then I just incorporated into a moment of silence for the, the Ogay family and the Dejolay family and it was, um, yeah, it was a, yeah, it was a great feeling to be a part of that, uh, moment of silence for these, uh, two gentlemen, so, uh, yeah, I just, once again, congratulations to that team and congratulations to the, you know, Mayor Copeland and the city for putting on a great event and that's all I have. All right, I probably need a motion to go into closed session. Yeah, thank you councillor Kreviak, we have a motion, all those in favor? Kerry, thank you.